...of June 20th to, uh, it's not the 20th. It's the, uh, today is the 18th to order.
Can I just request we take one thing out of order? Bring Boise up first, because we just have to sign the plan and get them out of here.
Absolutely. It's not that you're not welcome to be here, but yes, we can take that out of order.
Thank you.
Okay. And, um, very good. We have a full house. I, Yoli has been excused for the evening. Gavin, we assume will be here late. So, uh, we have a quorum and, uh, I, the approval of the minutes of the, um, June 20th meeting. Do I hear a second? All in favor? Aye passes. Thank you. Onto old business. Before we do that, before we get onto old business, for some of you who have been here before and some of you who are new, I would like to introduce our planning board liaison to the Board of Selectmen, Kim Stacy Horn. And we hope Kim will be joining us at the table for at least 99% of our meetings, but no pressure. You can do that. And, um, you know, feel free with Kim, now if you want to talk to her, as she can talk to any of us, please do. And Kim, if you have any questions during these procedures and how we're doing things, please speak up. Please, please, please do.
Thank you.
Okay. So going out of order, we are going to take Boise Boys, Whole Nine Yards. Come on up. You do know there's a TV show now, The Boise Boys.
Really?
On HGTV.
Beautiful. Oh, right.
Yep, yep.
So it's for you or for Kim?
But you had, uh, we had, when we last saw your dad, asked to have, um, our, we have the right pen there.
Yeah, it's just paper.
Okay. We had asked, oh, there we go. We needed a signature box up here and we had...
They brought the stormwater mitigation down and this, we've got a plan for it now.
Right. What were some of our...
There was only a couple of mine. If the main one was the signature block.
The signature block, okay.
Yeah, we got the North Arrow and, uh...
We got them, okay. So, um, I'd like the motion to sign this and get them on their way. Wish them well on taking care of business and getting a new business going in and of, and, uh, enacted.
Beautiful. Whole Nine Yards.
Whole Nine Yards. That's okay. All in favor? Passes?
All I need's five.
Right.
Two, three, we got four.
We got, we have four. So done?
Yep.
Ken, I'm gonna choose, they're signing two.
We're signing two.
There's plans there. They'll take one, we'll keep one. If they need a copy, they can just have compost copied us.
What do you say, it's the 18th?
It is.
All day?
Take it forward, please. Done.
Okay. Yep.
Let me see, just maybe?
You guys. Doesn't, doesn't make noise.
Now, when, when the president signs an executive order...
Hands off the pen.
He always gives the pen afterwards to somebody who's, is that a process we follow up?
No, and if you hold it up like this, I'll be angry too.
Doesn't he use several pens for...
Yeah, one. He's a pen.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Good luck to you, Dad. I am, um, now also gonna suggest, there's no objection, that we move Blueberry Hill forward. So Darlene, I think would be pretty easy, quick one, too. Come on up.
I do appreciate that, 'cause I am working an overnight shift tonight.
Oh dear, oh dear. Well, we'll even talk fast. Ms. Ham was, came to us for a modification on an existing conditional use permit, turning an existing barn into a functional building. And, um, as soon as I see, uh, with us, we will move forward. Uh, we've had our site walk out there and, uh, have you come up with any plans that, for any changes of what we spoke about?
Just what we spoke about? About the deck wrap around?
Yes, the deck wrapping around.
Yep.
And that makes the disability...
Right.
...exit much better, 'cause...
Yes.
The fire department told you you couldn't use the other door or something, if I remember correctly.
The big doors.
Not the big doors, that's right.
Right.
Not the, yeah, the ones that look out over the beautiful sunsets.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Those are, like, points of egress.
Yeah, that's not an egress. Right, right. So, uh, I know, you've probably spoken to Ken about what you want to do and I know you're gonna...
I think Nick did.
Nick did. And you're shoring up the, underneath...
Yeah.
The one corner?
Yep.
Yeah. There's, um, where you can, there's, I, I think you must know the barn.
Yeah.
You know?
Kids' supply.
You kids' supply, okay. Yeah, to, to make that a lovely site for weddings and things like that. So, um...
So I'm thinking same conditions apply as the original condition we used with a permit from the fire and marshals office as required.
Right.
Building permit for the change of use.
And a building permit for the change of use. And we would like to see in your contract, no open flame.
Right, yeah. I have that in my contract.
You do? If you would staple a copy of the contract.
Yeah.
I have a question on the no open flame.
Yeah.
Does that include sternos?
Yes.
I think it does, yeah.
Sterno candles.
It does. It's, it's open flame. It does. I mean nowadays you can do so much with electric, and it is wired, that, that's very much wired. I, 'cause I know you can do a lot with, uh, hot water. Don't, don't put the electric in the hot water, but you can do a lot with heated water and, and keeping it heated, uh, in serving things. But, yeah, it does even sterno.
So, so if we do the same conditions as the original...
Right.
But then the conditions on the building is...
And the building permit to take care of the life safety stuff. Do you guys think you'll still have the tent and the barn?
Uh, possibly, yeah.
It would be a big venue for that.
Yeah.
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 So one, um, parking attendant, security person, or 100 person.
Okay, yeah.
Um, that would be the main thing. Crowd pool and main person.
Right, yeah.
For the parking and...
Yeah.
I think we had, uh, you know, liquor license was through the, the vendor.
The vendor does that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's the ordinance by on the amount of people at a...
Mass gathering?
Yeah.
300, I think.
Is it 300?
Yeah.
So 350, so everyone does 349.
No, it used to be 250.
It used to be 250. It's gone up, I think, yeah.
So what does that mean?
If you're having more than that, you'd have to go to the selectmen for a mass gathering.
Oh, okay.
I just, I just walked out of bring it up, 'cause I didn't want you to...
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we talked about that on the original one, so you basically stay. How many people have you had at the events that you've had so far?
Are you not counting open farm day?
No.
130.
Yeah. So still you could double that and still not...
Oh, that'd be quite a lot.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
What would your next business should we do?
We do, yeah.
Because you're gonna be paying for it.
Right, yeah.
And the parking is, is, um...
Yeah, we park them, it wasn't a problem.
Yeah. Yeah. And I do hope you would come back to us if you ever decided you wanted to take us up on our idea for your photo booth that we thought would be wonderful.
Your photo booth.
Yeah, cleaning up your husband's...
Oh, yeah. Yes, I'm working on that.
There you go.
I guess the barn was enough of it.
But you have such a lovely place and, you know, there you go. Lovely, lovely thing there.
Thank you.
All right. So with the conditions, um, are we...
Yeah, I don't see a reason to go down through the, um, standards. It's just a modification.
It's a modification. That's what I'm thinking, it's a modification.
Yeah, yeah.
So, um...
Just make a motion.
We can entertain a motion to accept the, to, to approve the modifications to the existing...
May, may I ask if you have any conditions standing on the table now that would go without approval or any new conditions that we came up with as of yet?
Well, they was talking to no open flame and stuff like that, but that's all gonna be under the building code, the building permits.
Yeah, 'cause they have to get a building permit.
I'd like to have a designated smoking area.
Yep. Yeah, I think we talked about that.
We talked about that.
Why didn't know if we had it down tonight or we're approving it tonight?
We're, conditional use permit, we are approving tonight, but you'll have to get, they'll have to get a building permit, too, and that all come under that.
Did you have an area for smoking? Over towards the outhouse or something like that?
Yeah, there's like cement pad there.
Yeah.
That would be it.
You, you just designate, give the people a place and they go that way?
Right, yeah.
Depending if it's raining or not.
You find out who the diehard smokers are if it's raining.
Yeah.
Saying you're vehicle property.
There you go, there you go. So, brings us back to...
We'll make a motion to, um, approve the additional use permit for Blueberry Hill Farm.
You hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Passes. There you go. And I know we'll see you again when you start building.
Yes.
So we'll work on the conditional use permit, we'll get you a new revision for that.
And... You, our next meeting, should we stop in a call?
We'll try to get it done before then. I don't know if it's three weeks to the next, but if, when you stop in, we can get you to sign it, I'll have it, and then we'll get the bill worked out.
Well, I'll be back in the first. I'll be back in the next one.
Yep.
Yeah, first. Okay.
So come to the next meeting?
Hopefully we'll be able to get it before a meeting.
Before the meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Just give a shout.
Just shout.
Lot of powder next week.
Okay. Very good. That'll be good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good luck, Dad.
Good luck. Mr. Martel.
Oh.
Come on down.
You're the next contestant.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello, Brad, we didn't mean not to...
Yeah, you know.
Include you, but that's okay.
And Leah.
And Leah?
Yes, I'm Leah Regan.
Did you, I didn't see it, stuck underneath there.
I'm Mr. Martel's attorney.
Nice to meet you.
Pleasure. Thank you. Yeah, that's for, that's a gift for Mr. Martel, so if you need to, well, if you need your wallpaper or anything...
Right.
Feel free to.
So we've had a lot of energy moving forward, then we took a little break and kind of lost track, then we had a little energy moving forward again, we took a break, so we're back to review the plan, what we've got, hopefully accept the application, then maybe make a site walk if you guys want to. I think I got a pointer out there for you, Brad. Sure. As we walk through it.
Watch it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, we've talked cluster, we've talked conventional. This was the original seven, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, then we had a little revision on the end there. 22, is that where we're at now? 22 lots, yes. Yeah. One of the concerns from Southern Maine Regional was the cluster wasn't a permitted use in the shoreline zone. The only, the lots were, met our standards, but the road frontage, frontage did not. Um, so we could look at it a couple of different ways. I mean, he could make more road frontage, but that would just be more impervious surfaces down there, or, um, the road frontage is probably out of the shoreline zone.
Yeah.
And so, and when we're at, when we're doing our site walk, we can take a look at all that. Once he, he's got, originally this was built as a driveway down through, he'll upgrade that to a road standard. He's got the meandering path that stops down through here, goes through, this is the common area here, uh, down into the waterfront, this is, um, would cars park here or just golf cats and stuff?
Well, we'll probably get a few spots for cars.
Yeah, right now there's only four, um, parking spots. Yeah. And the, the rest is gravel all the way. Yeah, and then you'd walk down through here into the path.
Yes, yeah.
Uh, once you get in within 250 of the water, that's when you're gonna get into the shoreline zone. Once you get in with 100 feet of the water, that's where you'd be getting into, um, definitely the meandering path, vegetated buffers, um, you wouldn't have a, um, gravel path at that time, it'd be mulch type stuff, and, and you want to create a designated area to keep them walking in the same place, but yet not...
More naturalistic.
Yeah, yeah.
And that path would be a crooked path.
Meandering, yeah.
Yep, yep.
It's a bit short, Ken, I like that.
Thank you.
Sounds a lot better than crooked.
But we all know what you meant by crooked.
How much development is gonna happen at that water shop?
The setback would be 100 foot minimum for any development. Uh, the tree cutting, there's a point system and we're working on a grid now for what can and cannot be removed that. Uh, every 25 by 25 area would need to maintain 12 points for trees. A big tree is four points, a two inch diameter tree, chest height, is one point. So those grids, they're working on laying out the grids now to identify. There is a lot of dead standing in there and what thinning would be done from 100 to 250, then you can remove 40% of the trees and you can have up to 10,000 square feet of clear opening or, I'd have to double check on that for the size percentage of acres. Do you know Leah off the coffee table that I'm signing?
My, my concern is the wildlife, the loss of, of habitat. Um, there are a pair of nesting loons on Loon Island and the loons are territorial, there is no place for them to go. So, if there is a lot more human activity right across from that island, that's gonna disturb them and what happens to the wildlife?
I thought once we get into this a little further, we'd use, um, Southern Maine Regional, they've done the review already, and probably Mike Morris, we'd use as a consultant as well in that shoreline zone, once we've got the vegetation plan and get input from them as well, too.
I mean, 'cause I can see all kinds of docks going out there and, you know, you're, they, they want to give, um, water access to 22 lots, it's a lot of people that are gonna be down there, that, the potentiality of, of harassing the, um, the wildlife is there, where there could be a facility of boats moored out there, because there's no regulation on boating. There could be, you know, I mean, I know right now, down in that area, we have trouble now with jet skis and, and boats harassing the loons. Um, so there's already a problem there now and...
There is?
Okay.
No, there isn't. No, is that a designated area or is that marked off?
It's not marked off, no.
It's not marked off, okay.
No.
Well, Loon Island's all matched, Loon Island. Designated as Loon Island.
Well, no, it's a nesting ground.
Inland fish and wildlife.
It's, it's not marked off, it's, you know, a...
It's, it's not marked off as nesting loons or something like that, that's, it's the name.
It's just, oh, I know.
Yeah, but I'm...
I see loons from Loon Island, too.
Yeah.
But there, there is a pair of loons that nest there.
Yeah. But it's not like when you go over to a place like One of Psaki.
Yeah, that's all marked off.
It's all marked off, yeah. You know, that...
Wilson, like I said, too.
Do that, yeah. I mean, I don't, I mean, I know that's what you're...
We don't often see a, any warden's on, on Grady's Lake, so...
'Cause they're all on square pond. Trust me.
I would, I'd love to see more out there.
I mean, are you planning on, um, putting dock enough down there for all these people's boats?
No.
So, I guess that, that's what I'm saying, I'm asking is, so if I bought one of those places, I want to get on the lake, I'd have to go down to the boat launch and go on, but there wouldn't be any place down on what's now your property, let's say the common area, for people to moor their boats there?
No, I'm not asking for that.
So there won't be docks down there?
No, not at this time.
So many dock.
Not at this time or, or there won't be?
Well, I'm not asking for that right now. See, I was gonna do 22 lots, I'm putting the road in to get down to two lots on the water, and that's why I'm getting the whole road approved with the open space.
The other thing we talked about at the TRC, see, I mean, was a build up plan, maybe of so many per year, are you still thinking that?
Yeah.
Or what would you be looking at per year as?
Three a year.
Three a year, so this would be...
That's a word.
Eight-year build up.
Yeah.
At, at the earliest. Sixteen, twenty-four, eight, seven, seven plus.
Ken, did you go through the comprehensive plan at all when, in, in looking at this?
No, during TRC.
Okay. 'Cause I have gone through, there's a couple of things that I found in the comprehensive plan. I don't know if this is the appropriate time to bring that up or not.
We might as well let them know all I thought, so they can address it when they come back the next time.
Okay.
And we use the comprehensive plan as a guideline.
The, the first thing is, and I think that I brought this up at one other, one other meeting, where, um, in the comprehensive plan, um, part eight, page two, it's talking about road design and effect on development, where it states that roads that are either rated poor deteriorating should be avoided as future development areas until they're improved. At this time, this includes Godding Road, Mann Road, Orchard Road, Peck Road, Sam Page, Tattle Street, and Youngs Ridge Road. So we're, we're looking at Youngs Ridge Road, um, being in poor condition, um, with a big development potentially going in. So that is one thing that we need to address. Another thing is, um, section nine, page nine, policy two says discourage large subdivisions in the critical rural and rural parts of town. And what this is asking is to require, it says strategies require developers in critical rural areas to present a conventional and an open space development as part of the subdivision application. I think with the proximity to the lake and the potential, um, detrimental potential to wildlife, we should look at a conventional plan.
Did you get a copy of the conventional plan that they brought in?
I haven't seen that.
Yeah, we, we did submit that at our last meeting.
Okay, yeah.
February, maybe, February? It was in February, uh, is it December 20th? Yeah. I think it was our meeting, but, uh, and, and that plan, we showed the, exhibited the, the amount of extra road and extra lot development, um, that the conventional is really the least impact for that property, so...
But I think that we should, we should actually...
Open space. The cluster is...
The cluster is...
Right. Is where the open, and the common of the cluster, I think, is, is, is have, giving so many people water access, where if, they would not be allowed to do it under normal circumstances, where you'd have to have a 25 foot, um, right away per lot in order to give water access. Brad, I'm just, I think this is one...
Oh, good, yeah, thank you. That's one thing I did not...
I believe my fingers are correct.
Oh, yeah, no, no. But...
Did you want me to run through that? So we did, we did, uh, look at the yield plan, uh, compared to the conventional subdivision in the open space and did a comparison. The conventional subdivision would have 3,000, 450 feet of road, the open space would have 1,950, that's what we brought in today. The average lot size of the conventional ends up being 3.26. We're down to 1.3 acres for our average lot, um, for the open space. Uh, the open space, um, uh, for the conventional subdivision, there would be zero open space, there would be 41.2 acres for, for our open space subdivision, so... So that's kind of the rundown, and the letter goes on a little bit more to, you know, explain...
Is it, my, my concern is protecting the lake.
Sure, understood, yeah.
That's, that's the reason why I'm, I'm, you know, thinking that we, we need to look closely at both of these ways.
And you gotta remember, I mean, it, I already did sacrifice a lakefront lot to, to make that into an open space area.
I, I understand. I mean, I want to make, my, I want to make sure that we're doing things...
Sure, absolutely.
Um, to protect the lake, I mean, it's...
And this is a unique piece of property.
That's a resource that's gonna affect all of our property values, so if...
That's why I thought we'll have technical advice from Mike Morris would be my pick, or, uh, another consultant of some kind, just to take a look at that scope as well, too, whether it's inland fisheries and wildlife they want to bring in for, um, survey or a report on that as well, too.
Okay. And there was another thing I found, um, section nine, page five, and I have, have not gone into, like, really trying to digest this yet, but it talks about, um, um, beginning with habitat, and, like I said, it's, I, I just found this, not recently, so I have not digested it, but, so this is something that I think that we need to look at. And it talks about using, um, beginning with habitat that as a starting point for development reviews, deducting to poor soils, wetlands, steep slopes from minimum lot size calculations, increasing lot size requirements, um, and requiring cluster development concepts for subdivision proposals. So, um, I am not really familiar with beginning with habitat, so I think we need to do a little research on that.
And that, I mean, that's part of the, uh, open space calculations, it, it runs right through, so anything that's over 20%, it, we have to deduct from our totals, uh, any of the wetlands gets deducted from our totals, so, and also the flood plain, so, so that, so just by having that calculation in there, that, that, that protects those areas that you were talking about.
Okay. How about the steep slope as a name? What, what kind, what if we, what if, um, what's the plan for that?
So your regulations are, you consider steep slope at 20%. You know, each town has a different...
Right.
...degree of slope. So that's, uh, so on our plans, we've actually gone through and, and noted the areas that are, that are over 20%, um, you know, and, and most of that area is in the open space, over 20%, you know, and, and most of that area is in the open space, so. Right, in this area right here. That's right. Yeah, you can kind of see what the contour is, yep. So, it's up on the backside of the property, away from any developments, so.
Okay. So, those, those are my concerns. Like I said, my, my big concern is, is protecting the lake and protecting the wildlife and...
Understood.
You know, we, there's a lot, I mean, I live just down the hill from there, so, I mean, you know, I'm seeing now a whole lot more wildlife. We're seeing a lot more turkeys. We're seeing, we have fox in the area. There's been bears up there. There's a lot of things up there that, you know, I'm concerned about what these creatures are gonna do.
I think, you know, when we get, get to that part, like we say, we have Mike Morris or inland fisheries, someone come in and do the proper, give us the proper information to have.
Maybe we'll have a sidewalk.
We do a sidewalk. Well, I would love to have him on a sidewalk with us. I think that would be a great idea.
Yeah, that'd be great, yeah.
I think he would agree to that.
For sure.
Yeah, and I think that would be a wonderful idea, 'cause then it's, I mean, this is nice, but when you see it, you know.
I'm also protected from the wildlife too and the lake, trust me.
If you don't have the lake, you don't have that beautiful area. Why, why would you put it there?
Right, absolutely.
Well, at the time too, is if the lake turns green from a phosphorus or cyanide bacteria bloom or something, then this lot that's worth X is now worth...
Right.
X divided by two.
Yeah.
So...
Times zero.
Also too, all of, all of the properties along there, so our tax base goes down.
Right.
Yeah.
And that only takes one mild oil infestation and...
And we don't have any water now.
I know.
Yeah.
I mean, Ken knows I'm protected from the lake and stuff, 'cause I report to him all the time every time I ever ran. I mean, I babysit that piece of land and that lake more than myself, so, I'm, you know, I'm real protected of it, so I, I know what it's, you know, what it could cause, so.
I appreciate what you're saying.
Yeah.
But also, being a lifelong resident of the town of Acton, I've seen subdivisions associated around the water that we paid dearly for 20 years, 30 years, 40 years down the road there. We didn't have the knowledge in that we have now, and I think everybody, including yourself, is a lot more comprehensive of the consequences of not being, and I think this is where Leslie's coming from. She just wants to make sure that it's not about today as much as it is tomorrow.
No doubt.
And 50 years down the line, so when my grandkids have, are living in my house, that, you know, that they have a beautiful lake to enjoy, just as, as I do and my neighbors and, and the people that you'll be selling to.
Well, no doubt. I mean, I'm doing it for my grandkids too, so, believe me, I'm well aware of it and I'm real cautious about it, so. I'm not one of those guys, 'cause they get up and leave, so.
I mean, if we'd known then what we know now, we wouldn't have 50-foot lots around all the lakes.
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah, yeah.
I think another thing that Southern Maine attracted our attention in this report was on the location of a stormwater management pond. Right now, in your plan, stormwater management infiltration area is part of the open space?
That's correct, yeah.
So, Southern Maine instructed us...
Yes.
Southern Maine instructed us that that would, should not be part of the open space. Should not be...
Part of the calculations.
Part of the calculations.
You deducted it.
Yes, not, yeah.
Yeah, so we, we did deduct that from our calculations.
So, right, you had a, what was it, 41 acres? What was your open space?
It is, what do you...
Was it 42?
Something like that. It was like a fraction on it.
Yeah, 42-something?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I told...
And how big is your stormwater detention pond?
Yeah, it's 38.8 acres of open space, and that is...
That's after Southern Maine said?
Yeah, we, we recalculated everything.
Yeah, 'cause it was, it was more like 41 or 42.
Yeah, we took out...
And then it came down.
Yeah, we took out a half acre of, in the flood plain, so there's a half acre of, that was deducted. 20% slope is 7.8 acres, and the stormwater was 0.8 acres.
Or pond.
Yeah, and...
Sort of hole, so to speak.
Yeah, there's a pond there and there's a second pond back over here.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, that's gonna catch...
And that one is on the lots?
It's on the lot line, yes, yeah.
So, it's not in the open space?
Uh, it is not. That'll be an easement for that, for that pond.
For that particular lot?
That's correct, yeah.
So, the 38 acres is suffice us for your open space?
That's right. It leaves us with 31 acres, yeah. A 38.8.
And how many acres do you need to have an open space to do the 22 units?
Uh, that gives us, that's 50% of the parcel, 51% of the parcel, and that is, we're allowed, if you do, if you do the calculations on the, on the plans, we're allowed 22 lots.
Okay.
Yeah, we deduct 15% for the road and, and all those, you know, wetlands, steep slope, the flood plain, and then we come up with a net calculation. But that, that's on the cover sheet, second sheet.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, and then the other issue with the stormwater management plan, it says right here, the sketch plan shows a proposed wet, wet pond, stormwater management area close proximity to existing wetland on the parcel. The board may wish to discuss potential impacts of setting the pond close to the wetland and alternate locations for the applicant. And the applicant should submit a stormwater management plan prepared by a registered professional engineer. The applicant should also submit a phosphorus impact analysis and control plan that includes a long, long-term maintenance plan for all phosphorus control measures in accordance with DEP phosphorus design manual. And I think one of the things that they, that I got from that is that if there was any way we could move that pond up, up away from the, the little wetland that they were discussing, because those things, after about five to 10 years, those things just start leaching contaminants out, because it's a hole, it catches everything, and then it catches it for five, 10 years, but then it just starts leaching it out because it can't take anymore. And with it close proximity to the existing wetland, we're worried it would just go right into that thing.
Are you thinking it's going up and over or it's not penetrating through the side, up and over?
Well, it's an infiltration basis, so after so many years...
So, the maintenance plan to it.
Right, well, cleaning it out, of course, is gonna be, will help. But I think that Southern Maine was indicating that if there's any way we could get it away from that wetland and maybe, I know it's difficult to move it up the hill away from the lake, but those would, if there's any way we could do that, that would be beneficial.
Yeah, so, I, I can kind of go through that with you. The, the pond is right here.
Yeah.
This is a drainage pipe that runs back and catches two catch basins back here.
Yeah.
So, all this drainage is, is kind of forced and underground through a pipe down into this pond. So, the location of that strategic to, if we go too far up the hill, we can't capture that water.
Right.
And we'd have to actually probably have a third pond.
Well, maybe we should do that, break it into two smaller ponds.
Well, it is two.
Well, three, it would be three smaller ponds then in effect, because you would have a little bit less impact. I mean, a .8 acre, that's a fairly large hole, so to speak. It might be more site-able, you'd have two smaller ones, each taking less water.
Well, actually, you actually increase the size because you have to build berms and four bays and everything else. So, you, you, like, if you built two ponds, it's gonna be a lot larger than, it's not gonna be...
Oh, it might be larger than the .8 acres. I'm not concerned about that. I think it's more the, the flow of water would be diluted into three areas, so your contaminant, some of them would end up up here potentially somewhere, something like that, and it would be further from the lake would be a benefit to the town.
So, so the other thing...
It's up the hill though.
Well, you still gotta catch, I mean, this one pond right here is catching the water from all, this whole thing, all the way down to like here. So, if we had some way to catch it maybe over here, over here, before it got all the way down there, we would have less water, we'd have less contaminant.
And I think as we go through site law with the DEP, we'll have a limited impact development plan, a typical for each, each lot. How you're gonna catch the water off of each lot, and I'm assuming very little rainwater's gonna leave these lots.
Obviously, the road is what we're talking about.
It's the road, yeah. So, they're gonna pull it into, with limited impact development, you get as much water in the ground as often as possible versus our old way of thinking 12-inch culvert to two-foot culvert to a three-foot.
Right.
Limited impact, there's no culvert. We're getting it in the ground as much as practical, as quick as practical, so. So, you've got two spheres, you guys working with the DEP with their regulations. I think they're probably gonna be a lot tougher than, than we are, but...
Where's the brook on that, on that map?
What's that?
The brook, the brook. Where is the brook on that map?
I think it's dotted lines, so to speak, that.
Isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, you mind that?
Yeah. I don't know if it's actually classified as a brook, more as a drainage ditch. It just concentrates in the, you know, up, up in, above that area, it's, it's really just sheet flows.
It's just above the area?
Above that. I just lost my map, but.
Yeah.
Hey, when your team's not helping you.
And you, when you were saying.
Yeah, so it just, it concentrates at the very end and does go into the lake in a concentrated channel, you know, so. Yeah, so it's not a regulated stream. It's not, not a regulated stream.
No, okay, no.
I think it would be considered a brineal stream that runs in the springtime.
It rents, it rents most of the year.
And there's this defined stream channel with the moss and rocks, and it's definitely a brineal stream channel.
But it does, it does dry up in the, we were just up there the other day, it was... Oddly enough, I think the definition is exiting the great pond versus entering, which never made sense to me. It should be both, you know, to classify.
Yeah, well, not often you go small stream exiting the great pond.
No.
Yeah. It's possible, but...
And to get back to that pond a little bit, that, that is in a, a level area. If you look at the contours underneath, it is important, if we try to put a pond up on these slopes, it creates a huge berm and a cut in the fill and, and it's, it's...
What about the other side of the road over here on the water?
Then, then we're gonna not get any drainage, 'cause elevation, we're above the road. We really are...
You're above the road, I'm not gonna...
Yeah, so, if you see, see in a road...
You got a copy of this from Southern Maine?
We actually responded to that.
Yeah, yeah, I bet you did, but I'm just, I'm just going over what...
Did they respond? Did you respond? Uh, they have not. Okay.
I'm pretty much just going over what they showed.
You have a temporary pond out there now for construction?
Yeah.
It's still, and that's like this area or something there?
Two, yeah.
Yeah, so I think for the site walk, you'd just have this one flagged out and this one?
Yeah.
This one's probably semi-constructed?
Yeah, the one at the end of the road.
Yeah.
Catches everything and a very minimal down the bottom to the right.
Yeah, yeah.
There's two of them.
The temporary one. So, this temporary one would end up getting filled after this one's constructed and stabilized. But I can flag that out, see that location.
Absolutely.
Is the board thinking, you want the lots flagged, at least on the roadside, or?
I definitely think on the shoreline zone lots, we wanna flag, because we, we're kind of hemming and hawing what we're gonna do with the road frontage and...
And the 100-foot line?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Outside the 100, it's 25% of the area for clear opening.
Okay.
So, that, that would be your driveway septic, house lot.
25% of the lot?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that, that's a double-edged sword, you know. All of a sudden, town pushes you to a bigger lot, you end up with a bigger clear opening. So, 10,000 square feet would be the minimum clear open outside of that 100 or 25%.
Just the minimum, minimum?
10,000, yeah.
I made the lots bigger to get the road ending off of the lot, off the lake, so.
Yeah.
I mean, I could've got more lots, if I push it downward. I just don't keep nice, big lots on the water. That's how it's designed, so.
Yeah, I think the board would like to see two lots on the, you know, two lots down there instead of three, so to speak.
Well, that's what I have, it's just...
There's only two.
I see that, but there, well, I, I think you know what I'm saying. There's one that's in the shoreline zone, even though it doesn't have waterfrontage, so to speak. So, there's three in the shoreline zone, that's what I'm covering.
Is this the 250 line here or the 100? Uh, that should be the 250.
250, 250.
Yeah, so it's barely damaged, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't have an issue with that.
The lot's just going off of Southern Maine, what they said, too.
Those two lots that are there, what do you actually see them for? I mean...
Two houses?
Two houses, two camps, just open space for anybody to...
No, for this time, just, just gonna leave them like they are. If anything, probably just cut the trees and grass them. If my kids decide to build down there, we will next year or so.
Okay.
That's another reason why I'm putting the road in, but no rush to do anything. They could sit there for five years, you know. I'm not pushing up and I'm not pushing to build the project. I'm putting the road in, that's why I'm getting the whole thing approved.
Right.
But, no, there's nothing in the works right now. I get it fixed, stabilized, grassed up.
Yeah.
Yeah. Southern Maine did say no, did not include any significant plant to wildlife habitat, but I, I think it'd still be good to bring...
Yeah, I think we still need to bring them in.
Yeah, we'll move the site law.
Yeah, particularly what they said.
So, we're gonna set a, set a date for the site law?
Um, I think we're getting close to that.
I think, I, I think we are.
Well, I mean, there's quite a bit to do, we're not gonna really get...
Yeah, well, good, I think for the board to go out and take a look and absorb what's out there, then as we keep talking.
Yeah.
When we say lot six, with the one we had an issue with, it's something like that.
We all know what it is.
We've thought of that.
Yeah, so much easier, now you realize what you're looking at.
Yeah.
So much easier.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Then we can look at the roads going into, Youngs Ridge, really Newbridge is the road in poor, poor shape, but the board can look for it. I'll wait for a selection to get back, 'cause that, that's more of an issue for them to...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, Youngs Ridge is a nice road, you know.
Youngs Ridge, well, there's, there's parts of it that are horrible. Down by the cemetery?
Okay.
And, and also too, I mean, we're, we're getting ready to lose Canal Bridge.
Well, I know, but, you know.
No, I know, I know. I'm just, you know, it's just, these are, these are all things that need to be taken into consideration.
If you built three houses in it, I guess would be around 24,000 in tax revenue generated out of there, plus you'd have 19 lots roughly at $1,000 apiece for a tax basis, so 19 and 20 a year, around 40 grand a year for houses with really no services, and that'd be kind of up to the town if they ended up doing that money. Or they could look for off-site improvements as well too, depending on the give and take. Probably on a build-out, you're around 200,000 on tax revenue renovated out of this, not counting the other side.
No, yeah, I was gonna say, that doesn't count the other side, right?
And that's, I was just guessing at $12,000 tax rate.
Twelve fifteen or something like that, it's pretty close.
We could always ask for off-site improvements.
Yeah. We can always ask for a lot of things, you know.
Probably ask for everything we want, so.
Here's my list of them.
I could ask for a lot more things over there too.
Tell your dates in.
And then you gotta run me out of here, then I get in a place to hang around. I'm gonna run my cell phone.
It's a country club. It's a country club.
Last night at the Sluggins meeting, Joe Dioro mentioned about the people on the private roads getting together to split the cost of having these catch basins that they've installed around the lake and stuff, all cleaned out.
They're going to go along now.
Outfits and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's kind of goes to what Gavin was saying. I'm not saying we have to do this, but would it be feasible to say that these need to be cleaned out like every five years?
There'd be a maintenance plan, and, and this is actually a problem, that's a national problem with this limited impact development. We try to do maintenance-free stuff, but when you end up with these rain gardens and detention ponds, they need maintenance. And I've heard everything from the town has an easement, just goes in and cleans them, to they bring prisoners in and the prisoners go through and clean stuff up. There's real no easy way. The toughest thing is, and not so much in a subdivision, somebody like on Lakesville, you put in a rain garden, a new buyer comes to the house, they all of a sudden put a garage where the rain garden was and all that's gone. Whether it was voluntarily put there or conditioned there or something, it's, it loses track. But when anyone comes in for a permit greater than 1,000 feet of impervious, we're looking for a stormwater plan that there's no more greater. And ideally, either working with York County Water Soil or Acton-Winkfield or Melsom, any one of those groups to do something to maintain it, they also look for a maintenance, a written maintenance plan that that owner works with it, and I don't know, I don't think theirs is registered at the registry into the deed, but it, maintenance is the hottest thing.
And, and it's important, because I heard last night that over on Jericho, AWAP put in a culvert and rain garden and did a whole lot of work two years ago.
Two years ago.
The culvert failed.
Yeah.
So, they, and, and I'm not sure if it's like a maintenance or why it failed, or if it was just poor design.
Undersized or.
I haven't, I haven't been able to look at it, yeah.
I haven't seen it either. Was that a grant project or?
I don't know, Cindy didn't tell me. But she wanted me to go over and look at it, so.
Yeah, so as, as I think we get a typical for each house, whether it's gutters into, and I think we talked once during the TRC that we were almost even thinking infiltration chambers in the ground for the stormwater to get into that, so there was a large enough area subgrade for all that stormwater for each site to go into, so you don't, which would reduce the size of your ponds and things like that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll actually have, develop a stormwater maintenance manual, and that's gonna be something that's required by DEP.
Yeah.
So that'll, it's gonna dictate the, the maintenance of all the catch bases, the cleaning, the schedule, and everything will be listed in that manual, and it'll be somebody that, the homeowners association will take that responsibility over and, and be responsible to do that maintenance, you know, either hire somebody or whatever it is, obviously, but but that'll be definitely something that DEP is gonna require, so.
Yeah, like Gavin was talking with the toxins, you say toxins, I think of the stormwater pond at Walmart where it's cigarette box and, and plastic bags and all types of shopping carts and things. This will be a lot of vegetated buffer before it gets to the, the ponds too as well, so.
Yeah, they're, they're gonna really be looking at the fossil.
What, um, what, you're talking about a lot of grass and stuff. How much fertilizer is gonna be used on that, because that's all gonna leach down to the lake eventually?
Oh, any fertilizer?
The more, the more grass you put, you're gonna.
Yeah, well, it's gonna be.
You have a nice lovely lawn and.
Well, it's gonna be, you're gonna use it right in the forest, you're gonna use it right fertilize, and that'll be all in the homeowners that they have to be, and I, I'm gonna highly recommend, I mean, can't hold a gun to these people's heads, but it'd be good if they could just hire a company to come in and do it, and now we know exactly what's going on, but that'd be in the manual too.
For phosphate free, is what it is. Yeah.
I already looked into all that.
Because I cringe every time I see a nice green lawn near the lake.
Oh, yeah.
Because you know, they're fertilizing it, and it's all going in, and.
No doubt.
Water does a lot, if you, if you see a lawn by the lake and they've got irrigation, that'll stay green without a lot of fertilizer, but if they don't have irrigation and it's green, it's all fertilizer.
Right.
But a, a lot of.
If you make weights in it, it looks green too.
Sure. From a distance.
From a, you know.
And as soon as somebody all of a sudden has a five, $600,000 camp on the lake, they all of a sudden become the steward of the lake too as well, because as we were saying, when that lake fails, whether it's the water quality diminishes or you have an algae boom out there, they've just lost their retirement damage.
Right.
They throw it on K-tank.
Yeah.
So, and as long as the phosphate-free fertilizer is available at the local stores, they tend to go for it too. I know some towns have ordinances for it, but it's, you know, it's hard to enforce it.
And, and things like.
Best education.
Watch your, Square Pond used to do honey wagon parties, and we talked about what went down your toilet and what went into your washing machine. And in, back in the day, it was, everybody used Tide, it was best thing. Tide will eat up a lake, now Tide has changed and, you know, whatever, whatever went into your septic system and then leached out was, you know, but it is education, and the people that buy the 500, 600, $1,000 house.
Right.
They, they want to look, I mean, there's nothing like looking out your window.
Right.
And, you know, blood pressure goes down, everything, because you've got that in front of you. And I think it is, I mean, there'll be an HOA eventually with this.
Yes, oh, yeah.
And we know they can be brutal if people don't go along, you know, I mean. But I think, I think we really need to get back to the site walk, it's gonna make a big difference. And you, and knowing you are working on a manual, there will be a manual.
Yes.
And, and DEP is requiring this and those things.
Yep.
So we're working and going forward?
How's the timeframe with DEP working?
Yeah.
We're, we're doing pretty good, we're on schedule, they're busy and.
So, but we haven't got to, we've had a pre-application meeting, so working on the application, checklist submission, and then, then it goes to final review with them, so.
Right.
They asked for some comments and different, different things that we could meet all, you know, if we wanted, we could meet it all, so.
And they address a lot of these things that you're bringing up with the, and we all have an infiltration system for each home, each lot, depending on the size, but we wanna, you know, submit something to them, get that approved before we get that too far into it with the plans now, there's different ways to, you know, to handle that, with a drip edge or an infiltration chambers or, you know, that type of thing, so we're gonna submit something, get that approved, and that'll, that'll show up on the plans.
Because the less water you have and leaving off the site, the smaller the ponds and. What's the steepest grade on the road?
I believe it's 11.5%.
Yeah. Do you know how far of a distance that is, it's just a short little?
Yeah, it does level up where it's important down in the Hammerhead.
Yeah.
And at the entrance, and so there is one section as you come off of that first hill, if you go to the profile.
It doesn't seem that bad driving yet.
Yeah, the profile's a little, you know, it depends on the scale that you use, if you look at it, it's like, oh wow, that road is really steep, but that profile's a little exaggerated, which is what a profile is.
Yeah.
But that, yeah, it's actually, it's at 10.8% in that for a section. Then it goes back and levels off to 4%, and then at the end of the road, it goes down to 8.5% or so.
And you're thinking pavement?
Oh, yes.
The road's gonna definitely.
Absolutely, before there's anything built.
Maintain it in the way.
Oh, yeah, yeah, be probably taken care of. The roads are within a few inches of where it is right now, it's real close, so.
Yeah, they're grade wise.
Yeah, I've had to fight a department out.
And I did bring along a letter with a copy.
Volatility, call them, not that it's an issue?
No, I just, no, I just, you know, I just sent him a letter to see if I could meet up with him, and he agreed, so him and another gentleman came out, we took a walk on the site, he liked it, he gave us a letter for the whole site.
Brad, did you submit that? I just wanna make sure that's.
I have that with me tonight.
I got a copy of you.
Do you mind giving that in for the record, just so they have?
So you want me to make copies for her or?
Sure, everybody wants.
It is ten copies, yeah.
Just saved you five bucks.
Marty, that, that one's mine, so I can make sure that.
I know when the orchard was there in the springtime, I'd get stuck down way at the bottom of the tractor, that hill seemed like it was like 48% grade.
Oh, really?
I had to walk off it.
Oh, what? There was a steep location in there.
Can I get a copy of that back?
No. Now I owe you four dollars. And 50 cents. No, Brad saved you that.
Yeah, don't forget that.
Oh, wait a minute, is it? Or, or is it in your car?
Oh, you're getting it out?
It was, no, that, that just came in, so that is not in the application.
That was not in your car? You didn't leave it there, we bent up down that road.
Oh, no, I did not, I didn't.
Yeah, he liked it, he walked the site with us, and.
Good.
And once again, you guys, when we hold the meeting out there, you'll see, it's pretty nice.
What does the board want flagged out, anything, the road's gonna be built, we'll be able to drive into this one, it's gonna be unique, it'll be open tics and cars.
We want the shoreline zone.
The 100-foot buffer line?
Yeah, so stormwater detention ponds.
Yeah. Center line of each lot?
Sure, something to indicate each lot, maybe not every one or two.
So you're saying every lot?
Just the center of it.
Just the center of it.
I'd like to see the three lots down in the shoreline zone defined.
Pond, just it ain't cheap to do that, and it seems like every time we do it, the stakes disappear and they fall over or whatever, so, but yeah, we could do that, so you get the 100-foot buffer?
The 100-foot.
Yeah, how about the lot lines, just the buffers?
I'm, I'm good with the center line, just the center of the lot with the flag, so we know it's six, five, four, three.
Okay, just so you can get a location with it.
Yeah, and then, then you, at that point, you can be plus or minus 20 feet or something.
On every lot.
In the total station.
Then you want the lot lines for the lots on the water, for two lots or?
I think that's what Gavin was looking for.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
The three on the lot. The three on the lot.
Yeah, get the back.
Two and a half?
The two and a half.
The two and a half, yeah.
Three are in the shoreline zone, so.
Whatever's in the shoreline, we'll leave at that, yeah.
Probably just this center line of this one down through.
Yeah.
This one's gonna be the property line over there, so the center line and this one here.
That one right there, sure.
And then the back of this one, so we know where it ends, so to speak.
This one here?
Yeah.
You got that?
Yep. Yeah, and then we'll have the 100-foot, the 250's where they had the forester label for the cutting already, so that'll be plus or minus a little bit there, but.
So 252?
Well, we have the 250s.
250s are.
It's already done.
Yeah, we have.
Two and three.
The field stops and the forest stops.
100 foot center line of lots, pond, and the shoreline lots.
Shoreline.
Cool.
Um, what works for everybody?
What works for you?
Saturday's 100.
Yes, Saturday's 100.
Saturday would be good.
Now, what works for me is, and, well, I suppose I can go anytime, that'd be all right for you?
You can't, I'll tell you what that, you can go anytime.
But couldn't we all, but, no, I'm, I'm leaving for Connecticut tomorrow.
Okay.
Well, we need time to post, and you guys need time to work.
But, I mean.
Right, we need a couple weeks out.
August 10th? Are you out on Saturdays?
I do farm tour on Saturdays.
Okay, our next meeting is on.
First?
On August 1st.
Can we just go there first?
Can we go there first? I mean, I could go the 30th, 31st, 1st, I mean, that's during the week, is, does that work for you?
Uh, the Thursday may work better, because everyone's kinda got this meeting planned.
Yeah, sure, that's fine with me.
I think we'd block two hours far.
Yeah, two, so 5:00?
No, just so we didn't become late here.
Right, exactly.
And we can watch our agenda here.
You only can come up in one.
No, it wouldn't work for you, I mean, no.
We'll bring the cable guy in.
We can walk around like this.
Face down, can you face down a?
Yeah, we can walk around like this.
So, does that work for you guys?
Well, let me ask.
So 5:00 on August 1st, does that give you enough time?
Does that give you enough time?
Can you get that stake out by then?
Yes, yeah, we should be over there.
There's some, there's, there are some stakes out there, but I wanna refresh it, I'm so.
Yep, yep, take down, what doesn't matter.
Yeah, with some faded, so.
Yeah.
Once again, we probably did it two or three times in the last three or four years, just to know, just to know where we're going, but everything's seeded down there and it's good, so, okay, so, so the 1st of August we're looking at?
Yeah, 5:00, yeah.
Yeah, it's on Thursday.
Yeah.
It's on Thursday.
That'll be Friday. We wanna meet here at 5:00 and then go out?
I, we did this once before, because I just put site walk, earning my tell. It comes right out. Meet at CEO's office, 445.
Yeah, there you go.
So it's 5:00 PM, August 1st.
Are you going out there before then, Ken?
What's that?
Are you going out there before then?
I seem to be out there every day, or every hour at least. We should be, a final coming up on Buzzword soon, I would think, right?
Yeah. So that's probably, what, two weeks away, 29th, so Thursday.
Yeah, that's.
That work for you? You coming?
I'll be there. We go the next day, go next Sunday.
Oh.
Yeah, and, and I get back the 29th.
Do not ride with him and his ATV.
What's that?
Do not ride with him and his ATV.
I just happened to order a 20-seat or so.
Lee, you didn't get in with a good job?
Pardon me?
You didn't get in.
I've heard already. You haven't taken her for a ride up the road?
What are you doing with that, that mound of gravel in the, right on up Ben's Ridge?
Behind you, existing house.
Oh, that's not gravel, it's.
Well, actually, it's growing now, I saw grass on.
Well, I hydroseeded it all, like every inch of that property on Buzzword, everything's been finally hydroseeded, and, and, I mean, the weather just, it probably cost me a lot, a couple hundred grand I lost in seeding over the years over there, but it's just frustrating. This year, I think I spent 50, 60 grand, I swear, every time I seed it, I mean, beautiful blue skies, and two hours later, it comes over and just washes it away.
We just washed it away.
Yeah, 55 years old crying like a little kid up there. So now, I just had to, I don't know.
Now you know the importance of erosion control.
Oh, I know, I know how it all works, but geez. You know, and then, and then, you know, the geese, the, the ducks fly in, soon as I seed, they say, we're going to Annes, let's go. And I'm out there running around yelling at myself, my wife goes, there's nothing wrong with you, what are you doing? I says, I'm trying, you know, run away a little bit, at least let the.
The turkeys love it too.
So you know what I did?
Some snakes and some.
Well, I haven't seen one of them yet.
No, no, get some rubber snakes, and get some owls, and it, it'll help keep the, or shotgun, keep the geese away, that too.
But, joy, violence is not the.
But the pile of dirt, believe it or not.
I do.
Oh, my gosh, Canada, no insult to Canada, but keep your geese.
Oh, yeah, trust me, they deal with a lot of damage for everybody, but.
Canada geese are the worst.
The pile of dirt in my, and that shit's gonna be a family compound up there, family, friends, mainly family, I mean, nobody's knocked my dirt going on to build a, buy a house up there, but anyhow, that's, I wanna build my new house on that. That was the excess material to make the bottom of the road flat, so it's nice and it blends in with the lots on the water, so instead of just taking the dirt, I had no, no home for it, so I brought it up there. Once again, that'd be cut down once I move the house that I'm in now, to build a new house on top of that, so I'll pick up the elevations, it'd be walkout basement, it'd be nice.
My husband was laughing, he said that you wanted to be able to see Bray East Wilson and Horn Pond from your house.
Awesome.
Well, I'm not gonna lie, that's my deal. And the horn girls next door say, we know what you're up to, they're great people. I said, what's up? They said, we figured it out, can you come over? I said, come over, they're great, great people, so we kept, become pretty good friends, we figured it out, you're getting closer to heaven. I said, wait a minute, I don't, I don't know if they'll let me hang around up there, so, but it was good, you know, good, good.
Very nice.
But that's what it is, for erosion, just seed it all up, and so, so that's it.
You see Mount Washington?
Oh, yeah, I get a beautiful view of that.
So, so what else can you want?
There you go.
The three lakes, Mount Washington.
Yeah, and when the wife throws me out there, I go up there and sit on my golf cart and just look around. Stop thinking up there, stop thinking.
We should make this the action postcard, you know, beautiful action, all these views.
Well, I do have a lot of compliments, and a lot of people even live on the lake, around the lake, they say, well, you scared us at first, but you did a hell of a job up there, you know, cutting the trees, but at least you're stumping it and grassing, it looks, it looks beautiful, so.
Some people are still frightened.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, some people are still frightened.
Yeah, twenty of your neighbors asked today, I was doing inspection out there, and he'd heard 102, 103 houses.
Oh, jeez.
No.
There was a stuff out there.
Yeah, and I got asked at the grocery store if you were gonna leave any trees at all.
Well, and there's, there's a lot, there's a lot of dead trees on that property, well, it's never been cut, never, ever been sowed, there was a lot of, a lot of dead stuff, you know? But, but it'd be nice when I'm done, I'm not done yet, I'm planting some more trees, I'm gonna plant, like, you know, I'm gonna plant some really nice, beautiful, round-headed maple trees through the middle of the field, you know, once, probably next year, next year or so.
When you, when you have, when you sell the lots, are you gonna ask them to plant trees and stuff?
Oh, yeah, there'll be street trees.
Yeah.
Yeah. My goal is to, um...
I could look at it, they're not here.
Have you seen the tree boxes, Brad, where it's the catch basin things that...
Filleted.
Yeah, yes, yeah. Have you seen them inflated, it worked?
Yeah, we're doing that. I'll be planting rock tree trees. I want to do some nice trees. Oh, yeah. They don't feel long, it's gonna be nice, and, um, I mean, if they're, uh... Yeah, and once again, I'm not opening up, but there'll be some nice flowering trees, once they're ready.
Yeah, they work good.
Drive way, I'm gonna have a nice entrance coming in, I want to get all that state of life, maybe flower beds and stuff, it's gonna be nice.
So it does work.
Oh, yeah.
And I like to see if they do make...
Oh, yeah. I'm gonna make it right. Spent a lot of time, a lot of, a lot of money, a lot of, you know, moving things around, redesigning, that's why I... Yeah, a little bit, till I slow it down. I want to visit every avenue that I could, I think, probably. But I can't want to put a lot of power to it. It doesn't serve its purpose.
Right, right.
It's a nice spot, but it's okay.
Just walk in the site, you're gonna see, you'll see a lot of them.
I drive by it every day.
Yeah.
Have you lost your gavel?
Oh, it is worth it. And you've done a nice job.
Protect the lake.
My concern is that...
Mouse tracks.
Yep. Mine, mine too. Oh, yeah.
I did.
Mine too, because when I'm living there, you know, I want it to be nice too, like you said, you ruin the lake.
Well, you know, every now and then, I let the meetings run away from me.
Sure am. You come up here, something's a bit fire.
Every now and then, my meetings get away from me, so I come back.
Should we bring the assessors with us on our sidewalk, or wait till the next one?
Can you give me some breathing room here? I got a bigger hammer too.
Oh, I've got a bigger one too. I've got a bigger one too.
Every meeting's a good one.
Arnie, I've never brought this out in here before, so... Um, and, and just so you know, I do have a mallet. But, um, no, I think... Yeah, let's, let's see if we can bring Mike to this meeting, or even, um, if he can't, see if we can get fishing game out or something like that. And, uh, those things will be marked out, and we did get a little wild tonight, but I'm gonna blame it up, there was a full moon the other day, so we're on a waning moon, moon. We will see you then, and, uh, you know, just keeping you in, I mean, we, we do hear, and maybe you've seen, there are still concerns about how big this project is going to be. I think people, now they see the one house on the other side.
Yeah.
And they're going like, oh, you know.
Right.
No, I understand.
Nice, but, um, you know, whether it's cutting trees, or the, the piles of gravel, or, you know.
Yeah.
That, you know.
I, I address a lot of concerns too with the neighbors.
Talk to your neighbors.
Even, oh, yeah, it's also...
Talk to your neighbors, you know.
Even if people live in Acton, they thought I was gonna open another boys camp, and have, you know, like, ten, you know, twelve, thirteen, fourteen hundred units, you know, sites, I said, no. And, you know, could I, maybe I could, I, I think I could, but I said, no, that's not my intention, is doing a boys camp, so... So I, so it calmed down a lot of the people, you know, at that, at that...
That's good.
Yep, so, but they're all catching on, I think, and, uh...
I think when, when people started seeing the clear cut, it did scare them.
That was very scary. I mean, and, and the concern of the wildlife, you know, it is, is a very real thing.
Oh, yeah.
You know, uh, it, it's...
Just dispensing.
A very, very real thing. If we go through that, see that, then, you know, again, we'll have to add public meetings and all that.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
But I think we're moving forward.
On that note, I'm gonna be such a lawyer, I just need to catch myself up as to where we are procedurally. Is this, my understanding was this meeting was basically to accept the application, or to deem the application complete, and I just, can I just clarify where we are?
No.
No?
Yeah, we accepted the sketch plan application.
Yeah.
We're still in the, we haven't accepted the, because there is no finished plan.
There is no final plan yet.
We're still in process, so, you know, we have to do sidewalk, and a hearing, and potentially another sidewalk, and quite a couple of meetings discussing it before we be accepting the thing.
I think, you know, we're, we're not...
You wouldn't do the hearing until you accepted the application?
Yeah, we have to accept the application, then we have a hearing.
We could do both, we can do hearings whenever the need.
Yeah, but that's, uh, but I, I think realistically, we're probably looking at...
I think people have a lot of questions in public.
Oh, yeah, I mean, we're not saying we won't do that.
I think there's no answers yet.
Yeah, we want to get the, the final plan, get primed up.
That's right.
See, you're, you, you don't, obviously, you don't have a public hearing until you start reviewing the substantive criteria.
Exactly.
So, but has the application been accepted at this point?
Just the sketch plan.
The sketch plan has.
Okay.
Because there is no finished plan, we can't accept it yet.
I think the subdivision rings, it was supposed to notify of Butters at this point already, but that would have just stirred up a lot of stuff for no reason. So once we've got the, I think, do the sidewalk, get a final plan up, we can, um, go through the application, make sure that's all set.
Right.
Give you a bill, pay the, pay the bill, and then, um, at that point, we'll have public hearings.
Right, exactly.
Depending what comes out of that sidewalk, I, I don't think we're very far away from the final plan.
I, I think, I'm looking, you know, this process can take forever, as Arnie knows.
Absolutely.
Okay? Our average process is three months. We're not the best case. And that's best case.
Oh, I absolutely understand. I, I just had no, I thought that the last meeting was a pre-application meeting, just to kind of get everybody familiar. I just, you know, I...
You know, I think we're probably, and we meet every two weeks. Okay, that, that, so, uh, it's, and it's not really every two weeks, it's the first and third.
Understood.
Okay, so that puts us to August first, and then August twenty-second. So I think realistically, you're looking at September.
For a public hearing, or the acceptance of the application?
Can't answer that, because we haven't been on the sidewalk, and we haven't, you know, had any discussion about it, right?
No, I'm just trying to understand the process. So you have your sketch plan application has been accepted, I don't know if that's what, I think that's what you said.
Yeah, see, like, this, this is a new plan we haven't seen yet. We accepted the general concept and the sketch plan, which was the previous plan, a bundle like this. But there are some changes, like the stormwater management pond was part of the conversation, now it isn't, so...
And after the sidewalk, after the sidewalk, there may be other changes, so...
Right, we'll discuss it further.
So then, I'm just trying to understand, next meeting is site plan, uh, excuse me, sidewalk. After that, there may be, um, I mean, what would be the next scheduled meeting after the sidewalk?
Quite often, the applicant comes to every meeting.
Yep.
And sometimes, we don't see him for two or three months, and we've lost track of where we go, we've lost that momentum, which has happened a few times here. I think, right after the sidewalk, we won't need you that meeting, but that following meeting, if we're asking for anything that jumps out, Brad will submit that, we'll give it out at that meeting, and be able to go from, from that point there.
And at that point, after the questions are asked, and...
Final application.
Final application.
Final application.
Would be accepted as complete, and then after that, there would be a public hearing, or to start the substantive review of the review criteria.
Probably first, then September, plus or minus Labor Day in there.
Yeah, you know, the calendar fights us sometimes.
The other thing I was thinking, do we...
Fourth of July was...
Do we want this meandering path kind of just generally flag? Does anybody care on that?
It's already there, isn't it existing?
Yeah, yeah.
Isn't existing gravel road?
It's already there.
I mean, it's, it's there as that...
All right, if it's there, okay.
The Arnold Brook is there.
It's there, but then it runs into the pond, the temporary pond they built, so...
Yeah. But I mean, but if you're there...
Oh, there you go, it's already there.
You don't plan on having a parking area at the bottom of the path?
Nope.
So maybe you just flag where the end of the path is, if it's not obvious?
You can see it.
Okay, yeah. But I mean, that's the kind of thing, when I say you're there, because you've been simply, you know...
That's only walking down at all, you know, golf cart maybe parked on the end down there, but there ain't going nowhere on that lake.
Right, well, when you look at Google Earth, you can see it pretty well, so you drive down there right now, so...
And we did, we did set that back a hundred feet.
I was just saying that.
Yeah.
It's that right there, to the right of the twenty.
Right.
Is that the old road?
Yeah, yeah, there was two old roads, roads that the guy had. I'll show you those two, the crossings, they're still all there.
Are the orchards all gone?
Oh, yeah. Years, years ago, yeah.
They were gone, yeah.
When will be D E P, get their report and, and what they want?
Uh, that's gonna be, it's probably gonna be a couple of months to get a final, final approval from them.
So would that affect what we do?
What we normally, normally would do is, we'd get to the planning board, we'd come in and we'd get everything to your satisfaction. A lot of times, we get a conditional approval based on approval from D E P. And we are gonna have subtle comments, like, you know, they might want another inch inside the barn for storage, and, you know, phosphorus, you know, it's a small, small details to the plan. We will submit the final plan back to the board, and, uh, but, but normally, that would be just a condition, hey, guys, get, get your, get your approval from D E P. More restrictive.
More restrictive than the town would have, and it's just another restrictive, restriction on the plan.
So we're not, we're not actually held up by D E P?
No.
No, get, get my approvals from you, then they'll do the finished touches, and I'll get your plan at the end.
Okay, yeah. I think a lot of times, what we find is that, in any scenario, we do our thing first, and then the, and then the state, or the government, or the feds, whoever...
Yeah.
You know, D U P, or whoever, they take it pretty much from us.
Right.
And then they say, okay, this is cool, this isn't cool, this is, tighten this up, or, boy, they really got you, you know, tighten here. So it's, uh, it's fluid, but it's, um, sometimes it's going like sludge.
Yeah, it's not, it's not easy.
So, so let's make that, then, five o'clock on the first of August.
You think that's enough time, Ken, two hours? I'm sure everybody's working too, so, should be enough time, right?
Where we don't have to walk in the middle of the woods, where...
Yeah, right, and you can drive down the water.
And you can see lot one, lot two, lot three, lot four.
It's not like the Buzzard Road one, the first time we went there.
Yeah, this is nice grass, and the, you know, the, yeah.
I think the attraction's gonna be, whoops, right down here.
Yeah, that's fair.
It's gonna be that.
That, that and the...
Detention pond, the, the pond.
Right, the ponds.
Be able to see the contours.
Yeah, and the contours of that, I think that's gonna be the biggest thing.
Once again, with my luck with the rain, what happens if it's raining? Or if you have a snowstorm, knowing my luck, but, uh, what happens?
If we have a snowstorm on August first, do not even come back here.
I won't, you can have, I'm gonna donate it all to these, yeah, yeah, trust me.
They got that on tape, Arnie, that's on, it's on tape.
That's okay. For a small feat, right, for a small feat.
Leah agrees, you don't come back.
Now, what happens if it's raining or something, does nobody...
We'll see in the rain.
Umbrellas, right.
We all have, uh...
We have sunglasses.
My boots.
That's an occupational hazard of being out.
You guys just want to see me cry again, don't you?
If it is a hurricane, you will call, you will.
I won't be there. I'll be hiding.
You will, you make Brad be there.
Yes, I'm gonna be the only slicker, yeah.
Yeah, do that. Anything else?
No, no, I'm good.
You're welcome, appreciate it.
Okay, well, thanks a lot.
Thank you, and even though we got a little roosy goosey in here...
No, it's okay.
The discussion, I think, is always good.
We, we gotta cover everybody's base, all of it.
Yeah.
The lake's important, the animals are important, and I'm on board.
We cover it all, I think that's good. And, and, um, you know, I think, uh, the, what we need to do is, um, get things moving, you get a write a check?
Yep.
And we'll be in business.
What's your chance of rocks?
Is there anything free, Eva?
I wonder, Arnie, what would happen if today, I'm gonna use the pump water out of the lake, irrigate the orchard, I wonder how that would go over the days.
So...
Well, this is to keep them preserved, they all go, everybody, they're in the preserve, they do it now, when they, they do it now, when they go in California, they spray them down and shoot them off, you know? Yes, it's crazy.
A lot of the, a lot of the public, just destroying their mass, as they mass create, and the water's all the boat reasons. If you got boats, you're asking, you're getting many. Well, I just think that's...
I just bought my chip, he spilled it a little bit there for me, if we get back on it, see.
Hasn't that hurt you?
No.
Games are extra money, so we can...
But, but I, I've seen...
Yeah. I'm gonna be good there, I'm gonna be good everywhere.
Okay.
Everybody listening to that too, you know, I'm on here, hurting.
You're tired, I know.
So we got a lot of vacation tonight, Ken?
Yeah.
I gotta eat that.
Guys?
Yeah.
Now I gotta go out.
Okay, guys, can we get forward on our new business?
I see that. Look forward, you see out there.
Thank you guys very much.
Okay, is that your camp?
No, it's not my camp, it's across the street from my, my house.
I, I feel like it's someone's camp, but like, doesn't...
Yeah, it was in there this morning, my cousins had it, they gave me some stuff this morning, Monday, and they gave me some good news this morning, I wonder if, you know, because they gave me, I'm still ahead of it, so...
Great, great.
It's scary, going there, I'm saying, oh, my God.
Thank you.
It was at ten o'clock this morning, but anyhow, it's all good.
Good.
I'll see you later.
I am in my office next week.
All right, I'll give you a call.
All right.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda on the new business is the best practical location, Langley Shore, um, the name is, uh...
Murray.
Murray?
It's sixty feet from the water, eleven feet one side, twelve feet another, and twenty-five from the center of the road. So there really isn't any place to relocate this, uh, jacking it up, doing a foundation underneath it. If it's not concrete, it's pavement, but he does have a small yard there too as well.
Where's the yard?
Yeah, assessing, I got it behind it. Oops. Did you get two, three photos?
Page them, page them.
Um, so when you have a non-conforming structure, and you either do a foundation underneath it, or rip down and rebuild, and it doesn't meet the setbacks, it's less than a hundred from the water, or less than fifty from the road, the planning board, at that time, the state requires us to relocate it to the best practical spot. Quite often, we're moving it away from the lake as far as practical. He's looking to jack it up, in this case here, he can't move it back, because he's only twenty-five feet from the road. He is sixty from the lake, so it's not the closest we've seen, and left to right, he meets his setbacks, so it is in the best spot there is. The stormwater off of this place isn't very good, uh, you know, conducive, it is pavement and, and concrete.
There is a catch basin right in front of the driveway, no, right in front of the driveway.
Oh, yes.
It's not in, it's by the car, in front of the car.
Over on this side?
Yeah.
Yeah, so as he jacks this up, it rolls down into it, when he jacks this up, he can bring it up three feet, which he'll be able to roll this back and get it into the catch basin. Also, when we work with the stormwater plan, he plans on doing something with catch basins on this side. Also, when we work with the stormwater plan, he plans on doing something with catch basins on this side. Depending on the design, what's going to work the best way. And he should, don't get fooled by the green.
Oh, that's the yard.
Yeah, this is the yard, there is a buffer on this little frontier, it is 60 feet of...
Okay, that's the yard.
Yeah, yeah, so...
Behind the white chairs.
Yeah, this is, his, his side over here is vegetated, this one is here, but this is the straight shot here. So, as that raining water hits that hot pavement and hot concrete, when it gets to the lake, it's already elevated in temperature, and that's gonna be your algae blooms, that's gonna accelerate that more.
Yeah.
So, he is, when he goes to jack that up, he's gonna have, cutting the pavement, he's gonna be looking at some detention or stormwater mitigation up the side.
Yeah, we had the three.
Does he use that as a boat launch?
I think the neighborhood may, usually, if it's...
What was the neighborhood boat launch?
I don't know.
Is it a public boat launch?
It's, it's only his, but I would think if my neighbor had it, I'd be using it.
A couple, only a couple, um, people use it.
So, you're not, you're not thinking he's gonna remove the boat launch?
No, boat launch, he, he intended to keep.
Not any of the, aside of the house or anything like that. Can't get rid of any of that concrete or...
Some of it, he's gonna reduce and be able to mitigate out.
About how many square feet of impervious is he gonna remove? And how are we doing with our 20% lot coverage on this lot, didn't we calculate that?
Well, he's not gonna have any more than, he's not gonna increase it, 'cause he's not building it.
Right, well, what is he at right now, you know?
Um, I don't think I have a 20% for him on that.
No, we haven't done that yet.
Ken, if he, when he puts the foundation under it, and he obviously, like you say, elevates the driveway, or boat launch, or whatever you wanna call it, some of that water, like you said, will be going back.
On the street side.
But, with that being said, the water off the house...
The rainwater off the side.
It is going to go at a faster pace into the lake.
So, the rainwater off the house, he'll be able to, this, I didn't get a good photo of it, there's kinda like a sidewalk, wood, fat foundation, something odd, that's going to be removed, and he'll be able to do some drip line trenching on the side of it, so he'll be able to capture the stormwater off the house. Uh, this side's vegetated, but he'll do the same on that. And he was looking at trying to get a couple of catch basins down here, as they, once they rip some of this up, and be able to mitigate some of this down through here. I'm thinking, uh, York County Water and Soil Plan on this one versus Acton Wakefield Watershed, uh, to step it up just a little bit on that. And it's more advice for him for what to do, because if he's not digging up, down, and over here, but we can educate him on it, I think he's willing to do it.
Can we ask to eliminate, uh, so-called boat launch?
You can ask anything you want.
I mean, could, can that be an addition in doing this, or that's not?
I would say, um, if, if that was a condition you'd ask, he'd probably, having him come in at the next meeting and discuss it, and see if you wanna do a sidewalk or something like that.
Maybe we should do that, and then we can get the, get the impervious figured out for the lot, too.
I think if he's not increasing it, there's no reason, there's no reason to calculate it.
Down below the 20%, if he's over it.
There's no way you're gonna get him down below 20%.
Well, I'd like to reduce it, I mean, we should, all right, I'll make the motion, we take a sidewalk, check it out, 'cause we don't have enough information, or just come back to it at the next meeting.
Oh, what's your motion?
I'll make a motion, we table this issue till the next meeting. When we have more information, I don't know if I wanna run right out there, but we could.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
I'm abstaining.
Right.
Um...
Ken's trying to figure out the impervious right now.
Can, all right, can we, would you please rescind your motion, so we can figure out the impervious before we go forward?
Well, it dies for lack of a second, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, there is no second, motion fails.
Sounds like he killed himself from those.
I know, suicide is best.
I mean, I, we don't have all the information we need, I, I came up against this last time, too, with these best possible locations, I really wanna have the applicant down here, so I can talk to them. It's hard to just be having a back and forth with Ken, because it's not really fair, we're supposed to be working together, not butting heads a little bit, trying to figure it out, I'd love to talk to the applicant on, on these best possible locations. I think we had the same thing last time.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
We did, all right.
But sometimes, Gavin, you ask for a lot of impossible stuff, but you, you're right to ask for whatever you can and want.
Yeah, I just drive in the direction I wanna go and see how far I can get, you know what I mean, I'm not trying to...
Do you, do you brush?
That happens sometimes, in politics, right?
I can, I can relate, Gavin.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure you can, I'm sure you can.
I do, um, just give a couple minutes to let him do his calculations here.
64% lost.
So, if we had the applicant here, we could say, can you, would you be willing to reduce down to X percent? It doesn't have to be 20%, but say, can you get down to 40% instead of 62%?
You do understand the applicants don't live in town, and they're usually a few hours away, and we are on a Thursday night.
Right, but this is, so, this is an investment project, very important. See, that's what I'm saying, we're going back and forth.
Yeah, I do understand that.
And I don't love that dynamic, I'd rather have the applicant to discuss it.
I understand that.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't like putting you in that position either, so the result of it is to prove it, but I'd love to discuss it.
I think he's doing it himself.
Oh, okay, that makes a difference.
He's, he's acknowledged and home owner.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Oops.
Well, I mean, if it's work, if they wanna do this serious 30% renovation of their building, it'd be worth it to come to one meeting, don't...
They are not renovating 30% of the building, they're just doing the foundation. That's why there's no expansion, if it was expansion, I'd have been all over that stormwater calculation.
Yeah, he's just doing a foundation.
Just doing a foundation.
Is it gonna be a walk-in?
And there was no area, it already is a walkout.
Yeah.
And there was no area to relocate this, if there was a, if there was a foot to move it, we'd be moving it. And I, and I understand your passion, and I appreciate it, too.
So, this is a three-foot foundation?
That's the most you can elevate it, is three feet, understand?
He's not gaining anything particularly.
Uh, by elevating it the three feet, he'll be able to bring the grade from the road to the house, now it drops right down into it. He'll be able to keep it flat and get it into the catch basins.
So, in other words, by him bringing this up three feet...
It probably only gonna be about two, he's allowed to go three.
Well, it's gonna be a positive.
It's gonna be a positive.
Off the road, definitely getting the road through, and he's gonna mitigate that. That's why I said, I'd hold him to a York County Water and Soil Plan, and have him contact them, they'll come out, draw a plan, they can work together on that, and, and people are kind of electing to spend that money prior to, 'cause they're afraid the board's gonna shoot them down, they just spent money on plan two, which really isn't the case. It's an approved use, if there was room to move this, we'd, I'd have moved it on my sidewalk out there. In board's change all the time, the prior boards didn't wanna do this. Several towns, this is all under my jurisdiction, doesn't even go to the planning board, but we've always wanted to keep the planning board involved in these.
I think what we ought to do is, um, this is just conversation, I'm not making a motion or anything, but I think we should see about having York County make the plan out for them, getting in, in touch with them, doing that. And, 'cause it is an approved, what he wants to do, he can do.
And there, there is, well, this one, there is no place to move it.
Well, this is what, exactly what I'm looking at, he's 60 feet from the water, he's 25 feet from the middle of the road.
Yeah.
Where's he going? Nowhere, the only place he can go is up.
Yeah.
He is, you know, his side, his side, things are fine. You know, his pictures, let me see that.
Yeah, I was trying to get a look at the basement, definitely seems like it would be nicer in there with three feet more headroom.
Yeah.
Three is the max by state law, he's only thinking two at the most, is what he'll need to bring to fill that road to foundation side, and get it to pitch over to the catch basin.
There's been a lot done to this house over the years.
That would be a typical camp where they've added, 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 so when we look at the property cap, 30% is calculated from 1989.
Yeah.
The property cap from 1989 looks just like that, it has that, so...
Really, yeah.
He can do 30% more than that, and he's just looking, at this time, just jack it.
No, if this, this, I take it is because of the runoff, he's got this...
Yeah, 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 so that would be, he's trying to probably bring the grade up to about where that white is.
Well, in probably winter time, he closes it down by putting the hay bales there or something.
I think that's runoff from the, the road that's coming down in there. And that's why, that's why I would be hesitant to have Acton Wakefield Watershed, and go more professionally with York County on that one.
Yeah, Acton Wakefield Watershed has already been involved on that road.
Yeah.
They were the ones that had us paint that, the road, right in front.
Right, with the grants, was that a grant project?
Yeah, it was a 319 grant, and put the catch basin in, because the, during, having rainstorms, the water would just run right down the, the ramp, yeah.
Oh, I'm sure, I know, that's special regard.
I mean, and, and when, when it really rains bad, it still overtops the, the catch basin and goes down.
I'll make a motion that we accept the conditional use with a plan from York County sort of one.
Approved.
Approved, yes.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Our secretary's writing.
Yes, I know, do we have a second on that motion?
Oh, he's seconded, seconded.
We have a second, any more discussion?
I'd like to put a condition in there, but we reduced that impervious surface by X amount, I'd, I'd like to have the board and the applicant discuss how much is a reasonable amount to ask of him, so I don't just throw a number out there.
I don't disagree with you, I'd like to see what York County says in their plan.
We'll go on their advice for the, trying to bring him into conformance with the 20% lot coverage.
If we can do it, yeah.
Well, I mean, if he's five feet from the lot line, we can move him to six feet from the lot line, that's what we do, so if he's 62% impervious, and wants it 20%, if we get down to 45%, that'd be happening, you know?
The, the photo of the, the front on the water, not, not that one that really shows.
I was gonna put lunch today, so I might get riled up.
Uh, the one that shows here.
Over on the side?
Yeah.
I think that was one of the...
I mean, nor- normally, York County's sort of water is pretty conservative, right?
Yeah.
What are you trying to say, Ani, conservative?
Well, I mean, uh, they... Are very, normally pretty strict, or whatever, of what their advice, you know, their, their plan that they're gonna do would be very...
The best for the property within a reasonable amount.
That's, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
Well, let's put in a note of some sort that we want them to reduce the impervious surface, but the thing is, it's like, we need to talk, I, I don't know, I'd, I'd love to get that in there somehow.
If he was adding an addition, or if he was increasing that, I, I would fully agree with you, but...
Well, he's come to us for a best practical location permit, and he's not conforming on the lot coverage.
It is in the best practical location, correct?
Well, that's what it says on the agenda.
No, no, the, the...
But the house is in the best practical location.
Oh, true, I'm not, not disputing that.
And he isn't increasing the storm...
It's the same process, well, we have other ones where we choose not to move, we could have moved it a foot, we choose not to, it's the same process.
Uh, we don't know of any that we...
vegetation and impervious surface.
I don't know of any that we've asked to move, that we could have moved.
We're not getting it, what, what I'm trying to look at is picture that shows where, here, that one. See, I would love to see some of that, that looks like it could break off and just be in the water at any minute. And if something could be done about that, that would make me happy. Now, do we have the right for that? Couldn't we, could York County say, hey, look, we gotta reduce this by a certain amount, let's see what we can do here? I don't know, that's why I wanna have York County come up with the best...
Plan, management plan.
The best management plan, and when he's taking stuff away from the side of the house, here.
Yeah.
Uh, how much can he, he take off?
We're looking at two to three feet, you can see the, there's kind of a little sidewalk thing, I don't know, and play that, which would have grabbed the stormwater off the roof.
Exactly, when the water comes off the roof, if, if that can, you know, if he can take two to three feet, I want him to take three feet. You know, take as much as possible, because there's nothing, there's nothing in here that says he can't do.
We should have, maybe look at the road, given not just the site itself, I guess, but where the water would be entering the site from the road, you know, because that could be a lot of his problem, you know, it could be coming from the roof, I'm not sure with the general configuration of the site.
Have you been down Langley Shore?
I'd like to do a sidewalk, but...
Must all run right down, right down to...
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's kind of a funnel.
So, like where I am.
Yeah, exactly.
Tip of the funnel.
So, anyway, let's see, there's, you know, if you look at that picture, see that blue house, the road in front of that house is hill, so it comes right down, right, straight down.
Both sides kinda come down into the, where that catch basin is, so by elevating this, he's gonna be able to get that there, and get it to roll over to here.
Exactly, exactly.
I guess this has been one of my concerns for a long time, I understand, and I, I agree with what Gavin wants to accomplish, it's just like when I say, can we go away with some of that, but the problems that these people, really, the, the real problem is not these people that are on the lake, the real problem is where this, this stormwater starts from.
Exactly.
And then they're just stuck with it.
Right.
When I was doing work on some of these private roads, uh, I remember Foley Way, for example, completely washing out, and it was all coming from up above.
From up, yeah.
And there was another place up there that was washing out, it was all coming from a guy that built the house, a father with a tied driveway.
Yeah.
And all that water just come down and washed into, uh, doesn't matter whose, but, uh, washed right out of his yard, and... I have sympathy for these people around the lake, because they work harder to mitigate problems. They're quite often the town, uh, property owners that aren't anywhere near the lake cause, and they're stuck with trying to find a solution.
That's, that's, that's where you live on a lake, I mean...
And then Langley Shore has spent tens of thousands of dollars on that road to try to mitigate pollution going into the lake, I mean, it's...
But the pollution isn't because of you guys, is what I'm saying.
Right, no, I understand that.
It's what's going on up the road.
We're, we're down, yeah. Okay, so, we, do we have any more discussion?
Did we get anywhere with that, or...
Uh, we have, we have motion to accept, asking them to, to conditional acceptance, we want them to York County for the test plan for the entire situation, and that is motion on the floor, so if there's no more discussion, we will vote. All in favor? Three opposed, abstaining, two, three to two.
Three zero two.
Three zero two.
None.
That is the last thing on our agenda, I would like to say we're gonna start our workshops up again in September. Uh, we will figure out when they're gonna be, they were usually on the Thursdays that we didn't meet...
Wednesdays.
The Wednesdays, sorry, the Wednesdays we didn't meet, um...
Just any zoning changes or whatever, everyone just keep notes?
Just keep notes, you know.
Start right on that. Some of the thoughts we were talking were docs, do we wanna regulate some of these, or do we wanna get them out of our ordinance? Uh, contract yards was another thing we talked.
Yep, and if, if we do remember anything, we do wanna, you know, like docs, if we wanna come down on it, then we have to enforce it. Okay, we have to enforce it, we maybe have to, we're talking about even hiring another person, who's gonna be out there enforcing it? I mean, it's, it's ridiculous to put something in the book, and, you know.
Right, if you can't enforce it.
If we can't enforce it, it might be...
No, this one's hot.
Very, do we have another one?
No, that's the Jolly stuff.
Yeah, Jolly stuff.
Hopper Road LLC's kinda come back a little bit, um, I've kicked their plan back for a little bit of stormwater stuff. That's the Wedding Barn on Hopper Road, so we'll be seeing them coming back in soon too as well.
On Hopper Road?
On Hopper Road.
On Hopper Road.
They came in once.
Chuck Heffron, his old friend.
Yeah, it's the first one on that rack out there.
Yeah.
And we have the Wedding Barn, Mills Road, that's under construction as well.
So, there'll be, and we have, we could probably have four wedding barns, you know, um, we could become a wedding center, but...
They're a great place to have gatherings.
But, but, but...
Advance on the two of them.
Yeah, but seriously, on our, back to our thing, there, um, our workshops, usually about two hours on a Wednesday. We would like you to be part of them there, you know, but what we do on Wednesday, it's whomever can be here for a workshop, and it's very much round robin discussion, we make no votes, we make no decisions. We keep our log, not, I wouldn't call them minutes, we keep a log of what we're doing, and we bring it back to a regular meeting for the entire board to, you know, we've made, that's how we went through the comp plan. We, we would go through things and through things, and then at the next meeting, we would, um, make the changes. We, we did our bylaws that way, and the changes, we were under, um, an obligation to change, to go through and make changes on the comp plan by, uh, things that were written in there, so we've done and applied on that. So, you know, always good to have more input on that, always good to have more...
It looks like the animal rescue facility proposed, they, they're moving forward to, as well, too, so, they're still...
The dog.
The dog.
They're still alive.
Fifty-six dogs and an ice cream cone, good.
And Minnie golf.
What, and Minnie golf? That's exactly what they, that's exactly it, yeah.
There's, there's two things that I would like, well, it's probably more than that, but...
Would you put that chocolate in your mouth?
Uh, I would like, for us to address, uh, the low income housing thing for town.
Low income or elderly?
It could be one of the same.
I think we need to, it could very well be, but according to our comp plan, we're supposed to come up with some kind of a...
Incentive?
Yeah, and, and...
Now, this is, Arnie can put in a few, you know, flow income.
That's true.
You know what?
Put it right in the conditions.
I mean, that, that's not, that's not a horrendous idea.
I think it's kinda, you know, why not?
Well, if, if he, I think you can only compel someone to do that is if they're accepting federal money. And if they're accepting federal money, then they could do it.
Everybody except for...
No.
Yeah, a lot of the facilities...
People don't.
Don't, and if you do take the federal, then you've gotta have a certain percent of the low income and stuff like that.
Right.
We've just gotta figure out some incentives, whether it's reduction in lot size, uh... We've just got to figure out some incentives, whether it's reduction in lot size, eliminating growth permits, something to encourage. Most, fifty-five, sixty-two and older, you're looking at seven hundred, maybe a thousand square feet, single car garage. You don't need five-acre lots with that.
No, no.
I mean, these people obviously aren't going to have kids in the school. They probably recycle. They're not going to use the dump as much as they are.
Oh, I wouldn't think that low-income people wouldn't have kids in the school.
Well, I was at fifty-five.
Fifty-five, maybe, enough.
We've already encouraged that pretty well in our town.
The fifty-five and older?
Yeah, that's how we got the subdivision, the Eagles Trace.
That is way too expensive for people who are low-income.
And that, the house...
Well, that's not low-income.
It's not a retirement.
No offense. He's had Eagles Trace recently.
It is beautiful there, but, you know, I mean...
Yeah, that is a big home. Yeah, yeah. We should be looking a thousand square feet tops or something like that.
Tops, yeah.
Something to reduce lot size, road frontage, find an encouragement for that.
I guess that's what I meant, Ken, you know?
Yeah. What incentive would they have to do it?
Right.
Without offering money? Thank you, Gavin.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night.
Thank you. If that's something we need to talk about, then we should make that, that goes on a list for workshops, because it's going to take a whole lot of different things. I think one of the things we have to bring back on is the comp plan. So far, I know, we're probably the only ones who have done the updates on it, and probably the only ones who have read it.
Read it.
Well, maybe read it. Well, no, I mean...
It's amazing, some of the things that are in there.
It's absolutely.
And when we change zoning, we never go back and change comp plan.
Well, that's exactly.
This doesn't apply, this is, you know?
Exactly. And the comp plan actually takes precedent, it is the law. It takes precedent over everything, even though it is now out of date. Out of date does not mean, it hasn't given up its power of, you know, the law. So, I know several people have volunteered to be on a committee to do it the last six months. Robin does not remember the day that he said, "I'll be on it," but he did. He did. I'm going to find the film that shows that, you know. Dennis would be on it. I volunteered, and we never heard anything back. But I wouldn't lead you down that meandering path. You did volunteer.
It's crooked.
A crooked path it was, you know.
This is yours, Ruth.
So, yeah.
There's one down here, too, I don't know what the law is. We need one for Yolly.
I've got a couple. Those are yours if you want.
They're yours, one on them.
Okay, wow.
There's a big one and a little one.
Yeah, so, anyway, but that's where we are, and I would like to, a motion to adjourn the meeting. And a motion to adjourn? A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
We'll send a memo out for the sidewalk.
We will send a memo out for the sidewalk. All in favor? I thank you. Don't leave. Please, we are done.